The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on May the 27th, 2025, 10:00 a.m. in Commissioner's courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Sector Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation, page of allegiance of the U.S. Texas flag, Commissioner Watson will lead us.
Almighty, thank you for yesterday, Memorial Day, for us to honor and remember those who died for our country. Let us also pray for the sacrifice and dedication of those who served and are serving in the armed forces of the United States. We also ask that you please keep our first, also keep our first responders safe as they work to protect us. As we go through this day, bless the work of the Commissioners Court, our county, and our country. We also ask for your glory and blessing in all that we do. Direct our thoughts, our words, our decisions, and actions toward the right path, the best path. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns. And we've got, I think, probably 10 here, so we'll start out with Merrill Bonarigo. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you Commissioners for your service and also for listening. My name is Merrill Bonarigo. I was born and raised here in Brazos County and have lived here all my life, it's a long time, and I graduated from Texas A&amp;M. My husband and I married and moved to Old Reliance Road in 1977 because we wanted the Brazos Valley agricultural lifestyle and we wanted our children and grandchildren to have the same. We developed Messina Hoff Vineyards, Winery, and the Vineyard District to offer the same rural, old-world wine-region lifestyle to others. Our leaders must distinguish between the benefit to economy and the benefit to our citizens, your neighbors', and their lifestyles. This project has created a shock of distrust. The decisions that are being made do not appear to be in your neighbor's best interest, and it appears that you are listening to us, but are you really hearing us? There is no need to confiscate anyone's home, homestead, family, business, or productive cropland for an unnecessary roadway. The government could achieve the same goal with a less intrusive method. FM 2038 and Fitch are already paved with right-of-ways for expansion, and that is really all you need. Spend our money on what we thought we were voting to approve for existing road improvements on 1179 University, Highway 21 Fitch, and the Relus campus side of town, which looks like it's going to need a lot. Brazos County will grow, but in that growth, we do not want to destroy that which has led to our positive lifestyles and revenue for the county. Brazos County benefits from Messina Hoff in many ways. We bring 200,000 tourism visitors per year for an economic impact of $20 million. Just as so many people go to Italy to experience the expansive rural life with farm-to-table foods and wines, so do the visitors come to Messina Hoff to find that same peaceful and nurturing experience. The Vineyard District is blessed with vineyards and winery, beekeepers, vegetable gardens, fruit trees. These will be harmed by roadway expansion from construction, commercial development, auto emissions that harm the environment, and the chemicals they spray along the roadside for weed control which kill our plants and harm the bees. The map of the proposed roadway keeps changing, and the latest liquidity study area map published for comments encompasses our historic 48-year-old vineyards and the 50 acres we have planned for expansion. This would wipe out our vineyards, family business, and the livelihoods of over 100 employees, and so we ask why. Why would we want to destroy all of that for an unnecessary highway that brings unnatural noise, urban sprawl, crime, a speed of life that turns people to agitation, violence, and death to a county revenue source, and the beauty of the way of life? What is the win-win situation here? It is to use your monetary resources where they are really needed, improvement to east-west roads feeding Highway 6 and infrastructures around Relus. Please abandon the inner East Loop project. Help us preserve our picturesque vineyards, native Texas landscapes, and the laid-back lifestyle that encourages time with neighbors, toasting the sunsets, and talking with God at sunrise. We, and many people in the county today, our prayer warriors, are praying for us and for you. But the wisdom that comes from heaven is first of all pure, then peace-loving, considerate, easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruits, impartial, and without hypocrisy. James 3:17. May the Lord fill your hearts with wisdom, grace, and mercy to protect those he has chosen you to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Karen Hall.
Judge Peters, Commissioners, thank you all for your time today. Now, the last time I was here, I asked you to consider getting some type of timer, oh yeah, I brought my own, so that speakers would know where they were in the allotted time. Right now, there's somebody here with a timer, and they know exactly where I am in this, and without my little personal timer, I would not have a clue. For those of us classified as obsessive-compulsive, this is not a good working solution, so I'm asking you again to get something either up here on the lectern or something that shows up on the screen. Pretty please? I am here today to ask you to reconsider this inner East Loop. The population of the United States is not growing, it is declining. It is declining at such an alarming rate that the federal government is considering giving $1,000 for each newborn baby. I'm not sure how that is going to work. Considering the cost of raising a child, one politician equated it to taking a dollar-off coupon to a Mercedes dealership. Widening the East Bypass will not alleviate the congestion. The inner loop is not needed. The proposed I-214 loop will do a much better job. We need east-west routes, not north-south. If you use University Drive, a nice east-west, next is Villa Maria, and after that is 21. There are not a lot of routes in the east-west direction. If you have all this excess money, why not consider improving the west bypass with overpasses? That would make it far more attractive for traffic going north. Travel it sometime, it's just light after light, and they are not timed to keep the traffic going. The entire loop project needs serious reconsideration. The reasons given to justify that large expenditure do not pass the logic test. You have already spent $18 million, or in the process, to quote Kenny Rogers, "Know when to fold 'em." Please do not be so dug in that you cannot see that this loop is a mistake. Thank you, as always, for your attention. You all are superb at listening to your speakers, even if it's not quite what you want to hear. Teach some lessons to some other groups. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Stephen Pierceall.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Stephen Pierceall, live on Woodview Drive in Precinct 2. I've been watching from the sidelines since we first learned of the inner East Loop back in November, and today I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed inner East Loop. My wife and I moved to the Brazos Valley a little over six years ago, and as we started looking for a place to settle in and raise our family, we were drawn to the east side of the county for the opportunity to own a small piece of land and the peace and quiet it would afford us. We knew that by living out of the city, we were choosing a few inconveniences, like a little longer drive to work, or to church, or to the grocery store, but those inconveniences were worth it for the life we wanted to live. I think our story is like many who call the eastern part of the county home. We could have bought a house along Highway 6, but we wanted something different. Now you, our elected leaders, are bringing a new highway to us, though we aren't sure it's needed. As a civil engineer, I understand the importance of maintaining and improving our roads and bridges. If I had known it was the intent to build a super arterial highway within a mile of my home, I never would have voted for the bond. It was clever for the folks who were pushing for the bond to throw in the inner East Loop, a project that in hindsight, it seems no one knew much about, into a list of familiar and necessary projects on the existing roadways that we all travel. I'm thankful that Commissioner Brown has requested this topic be placed on the agenda, and I hope we see that soon. As I've researched the project and participated in the public meetings over the past few months, I've come across some confusing and possibly misleading information, so in the spirit of transparency, I hope the court can set the record straight. It's stated on the Brazos County Project website, Brazos County is studying the feasibility of a new roadway, and it continues that should the study determine a new roadway is needed, it would enhance local and regional connectivity. It's also stated that the project development process begins with a feasibility study, which evaluates the need for a new roadway. In the liquidity contract, the first item listed in the scope of work is to complete a feasibility study at a cost of about $6 million. But the problem is that the tasks associated with the feasibility study in their contract is to study the feasibility of constructing a new roadway, not to determine if it's needed. We've forgotten this first step. According to the county's project website, it hasn't even been determined if this roadway is needed. The idea came from a line drawn on a map by the MPO, but it's never been investigated to determine if it's really needed. There's speculation that it may be needed, but to my knowledge, no one has taken an objective look at our existing transportation network and the improvement projects that are on the books to determine if there are modifications to our existing roads and bridges that can be made to effectively meet this project's stated goals of improving mobility and reducing congestion. Until the feasibility study is complete, the county is wasting our taxpayer money and our time. As we speak, the project is moving forward with the intent of preserving a corridor for this future highway that we don't yet know is needed. This action of preserving the corridor impacts every resident of eastern Brazos County to some degree. I ask the court to pause liquidity's contract to allow time for a workshop on this topic so that the new Commissioners can be brought up to speed, and the court can evaluate whether we've got the cart ahead of the horse before proceeding. Since Commissioners Nettle and Brown took office, there's been no agenda item on the inner East Loop, the county's number-one bond project, so I'm sure they have as many questions as the rest of us. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Keith Bulway? Keith Bulway?
Bowe.
Yes.
I'm Keith Bowe, and I am opposed to the East Loop. I want to first apologize in front of, that I don't offend anybody, and that is not my intention. I was troubled listening to the remarks that were made on the meeting on Tuesday, May 6. As usual, because there are no opportunity to respond to the statements that were made, although they were true, but important parts were conveniently left out. First, I want to talk about July 28 of 2022. It's true, 45 people were in attendance. We were led to believe that this was open to the public. Since none of us received an invite, we requested a list of attendees and found out only, the only outsiders that were in attendance was the media and Commissioner Condala, who was running for office. If any of the landowners would have known and been aware of this meeting, I'm confident many of them would have attended and participated. Let's talk about Proposition A and B mailer. It's true, they were sent out several times, and the East Loop was on the mailer. Here's the problem. The lettering was so small, no one could read it. I increased the size to 275% on my computer, the lettering is blurred and gray with a yellow highlighter behind it. The legend at the bottom is 3/4 of an inch by 1 inch with about 15 unreadable items listed. You claim you have transparency. Why are there so many people upset? Why would all the open space available next to the legend and where the future road projects were not made bigger where we could read them? Who designed and approved this? The right side was readable. No mention of any loop, just improvements to roads, bridges, infrastructure, no new taxes, just happy talk, and to make everything sound great. I regrettably voted for Prop A. When I read the right half of the mailer, I thought it was explaining the map to find out only the devil was in the unreadable details. If I had known this, I would have never voted for it, and I'm not alone. The way I found out the loop was going through my living room was after I received in October 2024 a mailer attending the meeting at the Brazos Center. You can spin this and try to convince yourself anyway that we're 100% transparent, but this is simply not true, and we have the proof to back it up. There are thousands of your constituents that feel misled. Something isn't right and does not pass the smell test. I thank God every day for my faith in Him and that I live in the best country, in the best State of the Union, where we have the right to vote for politicians that want to represent us. We have put you on notice. You work for us. We expect true honesty and transparency. You have the power of the pen, we have the power of the people. My hope and prayer is that this court has the courage to reverse the position and start a two-way conversation instead of one. This will lead to resolve some of the frustration that we feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Roger Lester.
Judge Peters made a presentation towards the end of the conclusion of the regular Commissioners Court meeting a few weeks ago, as the previous speaker stated, and he put forth the idea that this whole inner East Loop project has been nothing but transparent. The no East Loop folks put out a rebuttal video shortly thereafter, and if you hadn't seen it, you're missing something because you've got a tremendous opportunity to see how things sometimes get done around here. At the same meeting, the person leading the prayer eloquently stated that they needed help making difficult decisions. I appreciate the sentiment, but I really don't believe you folks are making difficult decisions. I think you have the potential to make good decisions and bad decisions, more importantly, wrong and right decisions, and more on this in a minute. No offense, but like many people, I had to go online a few months ago to find exactly what a county commissioner does, and apparently Brazos County Commissioners are paid about $92,000 a year, and our esteemed judges paid a little less than $120,000 a year, and I'm okay with that. If I'm going to put my faith in somebody to represent me, I want them to earn a fair wage. One of the websites I came across had a tab labeled "Helpful Skills to Be a County Commissioner", and it listed four things. The first involved management and financial background. The second was community engagement, and that was described as "strong ties to local residents and familiarity with community challenges." The third was communication, and this is a good one. It addressed public speaking skills and said that the ability to listen and to address constituents was very important. And then the fourth was flexibility, a willingness to travel within the county and engage with diverse groups. Now, when each of you folks were running for this job and spending your campaign money, you couldn't find enough people to talk to. You wanted to engage with everybody 24/7 so we would hear your voice and hopefully put you in office. Suddenly, you don't want to talk to us anymore. Talk about jilted. I feel kind of like one of Clint Eastwood's ex-girlfriends, to be honest with you. And at first, I didn't understand. Well, what did I do wrong? Maybe I'm just not as attractive as some of your new friends, the MPOs, the county staff, developers and contractors. In all seriousness, I think I know why In all seriousness, I think I know why you refuse to engage with the public regarding the inner loop, so please listen carefully. I think you don't want to talk to us anymore because in order to do so, you have to completely change the narrative. First, you have to acknowledge that until November 2024, when the famous postcard hit everybody's mailbox, that your alleged attempts at being transparent just weren't good enough. Some would say weren't even genuine. Second, you've got to admit that everyone saying, "This is just a study, calm down", was and is wrong. You hired Mr. Pollster, who bragged that his specialty is he's got an in with Tech Dot, and he can get these projects to Tech Dot's funding stage almost immediately after the completion of a study. Not to mention the Honorable Mayor Bryan last week, who apparently allegedly once tried to extort a quarter of a million dollars from somebody, who said just last week, "Oh, it's going to happen," regarding the inner loop. Third, and finally, you have to admit that the mandate you claim that you have via the 2022 TRIP bond might actually be a false mandate as it regards the inner loop because of the misleading and the false advertising, as the previous speaker talked about, and the overall lack of transparency that this court continues to perpetuate right up to and including the good judge's presentation just a few short weeks ago. Judge Peters said, "I never know what's in any voters' minds when they go to the polls." And likewise, with one exception, and he's not here today, we can't begin to imagine what's in your minds, as you refuse to consider what many, many people are saying about this project. How about you folks grow some courage and make not a difficult decision, but the right decision? Let's put a pause on this study, let's get this on the agenda and a ruckshaw for discussion so we can start talking with one another instead of at one another.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Ferris, and I live on Ethan Lane in Brazos County. Some of you probably remember that I was a longtime Bryan ISD teacher and administrator. I taught one of your daughters, Judge, now retired from that. Others may recognize me as a former executive director of the Downtown Bryan Association. Mr. Condala, you were an excellent advocate for downtown and myself during that time, so thank you for that. Or perhaps you know that I've served as a pianist and organist for many churches over the years, and I'm not retired from that, still doing that. I've been a Brazos County resident for 43 years. I'm here today to speak about the proposed inner east loop, and specifically Commissioners, your legacy, your legacy as elected officials. You have heard by now hundreds, if not thousands, of comments as to how the proposed inner east loop will have a negative impact on a large portion of eastern Brazos County and those who live here. I'm one of those who will be affected. While the vaguely worded Proposition A passed in 2022 by 67% of those who voted, you know that really that only represented about 29% of Brazos County registered voters at the time. Respectfully, that's hardly a mandate by the people. There are red flags flying all over this project, not the least of which is the company to whom you have authorized an astounding amount of money, taxpayer money to be paid. I can't help but think of the parallels to a popular musical. Probably people younger than I won't remember this, but The Music Man. It was later made into a movie. In this movie, in this play, a traveling salesman, Harold Hill, concocts a problem in River City. A pool hall was slated to be built, and he said, "Oh, that will corrupt young people." So he offered a solution. He proposed that he would buy, he would have the local citizens buy musical instruments from him, and then get their kids into a marching band, and then that would solve the problem of the pool hall. Though the musical debuted on Broadway nearly 70 years ago, I think its plot has aged well. Substitute the inner east loop as the solution to a perceived problem that lacks data-driven need. And you have to paraphrase Harold Hill, "Not trouble in River City, but trouble in Brazos County." Either you're closing your eyes to a situation you do not wish to acknowledge, or you are not aware of the caliber of disaster indicated by the presence of the inner east loop in Brazos County. Commissioners, you have the power to apply the brakes to this project, to imply otherwise as disingenuous. You will leave a legacy in your time in public office. As a public servant, it is within your power to determine whether that legacy is positive or negative for the people of Brazos County, both current and future. I'll conclude with another quote, this time from an ancient Greek statesman-in-general, Pericles. "What you leave behind is not what is engraved in stone monuments, but what is woven into the lives of others." Commissioners, please don't allow your legacy to be in the form of a steel, concrete, and asphalt monument of an inner east loop, but rather one of dignity and respect for the lives and generations of families who stand to lose everything if this is constructed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Steve Pittman.
My name is Steve Pittman. I'm married to Sharon Pittman, who along with other family members of hers, have owned the 382 acres on FM 1179 immediately adjacent to Miramont for over 150 years. I also happen to be a local real estate developer, and I hold the CCM designation for commercial brokers. We have been working on a master planned community with some of the other owners of this land for over two years with the City of Bryan as well as Tech Dot. Our development will bring approximately 800 to 1,000 home sites. While some may try to argue that our development, along with some of the other tracts in our area that are also in the pre-development phases, are exactly why this inner loop is needed, I disagree. For one, as has already been mentioned by others, the location and size of the proposed 300-foot wide roadway would effectively destroy about 1,000 acres of prime residential development Some of that land, which is already in the city limits, like ours. Second, we have asked for and have yet to see substantive evidence that a new 300-foot wide inner loop roadway is even necessary. Third, there is the lost revenue and tax dollars to the county, city, and school district if these homes are not built. Fourth, many government officials will use words like "infrastructure" as a necessary evil and "good for all, but bad for only a few." But the few they speak of are the landowners whose land they want to take for their own agenda and the future homeowners who will not be able to live in the master planned communities. But I say any discussion of completing an inner east loop roadway is bad for everyone. It's bad for the taxpayers, it's bad for the respective government entities who will lose out on residential tax revenue that is pre-planned for the immediate future versus 30 or 50 years down the road, and it's bad for the landowners, who will lose out on being able to determine what they want to do with their property and when. Others may even try to tell you that these types of roads create commercial opportunities for your land. This simply will not be the case for this land in this area. The land is already too close to existing anchor retail such as Target Superstore and the proposed HEB that's coming nearby. Tech Dot has released a video of the Highway 6 riding project that will increase traffic north and south, the main purpose of this whole inner east loop. We have the widening of FM 1179 already planned and slated. Why not look at saving a tremendous amount of time and money by utilizing roads that we already have and making improvements to those roads? I'm talking about making improvements to roads such as Merka Road, Old Reliance, the Thornberry Extension, utilizing and improving the roadways we already have in place for this very purpose. Commissioners, just because you create a study and spend taxpayer money on that study to determine the need of a project does not justify doing that project by any means possible. It's okay to pivot, just like in basketball, pivoting keeps the momentum going, keeps the play alive, and allows you to pause just for a second and look for an alternative way to success. There are other solutions to the proposed problem that are available now and right in front of all of our faces, and the inner east loop is not one of them. I ask the court to pause this contract and pivot to a less invasive approach.
John Jack Burley.
Howdy.
Howdy.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Jack Burley. I'm an Aggie, a lifelong resident of Bryan College Station, and I'm here to state my firm opposition to the inner loop east. My family has owned 382 acres just east of Miramont for over 150 years. This proposed inner loop east alignment 1C would cut directly through our property. The majority of the owners of our property have been working toward a master planned community of over 800 homes. We're well into the process and have plans, drawings, and have spent years preparing for our development. That being said, reserving a landowner's private property for a roadway that may never happen is patently unfair. We would have to continue paying taxes on a property that we were planning on developing, but now we're not able to. And even if the roadway, if the roadway does come to fruition, its existence alone will deter potential home buyers from what's left of our development. Furthermore, should we decide to sell the land without developing it, no one will be willing to buy it with the cloud of this proposed roadway looming over it. Effectively, you'd be tying up landowners' private assets for years, if not decades. And even if this roadway project goes through, it will take decades for the community to see any real commercial upside. If our property is selected for the inner loop east project, it would create an unstable outcome for our development, reducing the number of homes we were originally planning on building, and reducing the potential tax revenue from this property by close to 100 million over the next 20 years. That's close to nine figures in unrealized tax revenue on one property alone in less time than it would take for the roadway itself to become commercially beneficial to the community. Now additionally, there are other north-south highways that can be expanded or improved to handle the existing traffic. The expansion of FM 1179 will be beneficial, as will the planned expansion of Highway 6 that Tech Dot recently put a video out on. And as previously stated, the majority of the congestion in the area is due to inadequate east-west roads that could more effectively connect that region to Highway 6. And it's been said before, but it bears repeating, it's okay if the study determines that the east loop is unnecessary. That does not constitute failure. Ultimately, one of the stated goals of the project is to provide better infrastructure for the projected growth in the area. But if you're hamstringing the growth of the area by putting this roadway through planned developments, tying them up indefinitely, and ultimately reducing their size and effectiveness, that's a losing situation for everyone involved. So once again, I'd like to confirm my opposition to the inner loop east project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cindy Wiley.
The people are hungry. We want representatives that stand up for common sense, brain transparency, and sound financial decisions for the people they are watching. I remind you that citizen oversight in our elections is paramount. Per Article 6, Section 4 of our Texas Constitution, in order to preserve the purity of the ballot box, it is necessary to detect and punish fraud. All of you approved spending $13,000 of taxpayers' money to redact ballots, yet the redactions had already taken place by virtue of removing the voting locations. The 1948 case Seewell versus Chambers refers to secrecy of the ballot will not be protected where secrecy shields corruption in an election. Redactions will make elections un-auditable, whereby preventing citizens the fundamental right to detect fraud. What do you want the people to believe about how you apply your judgments? All of the facts that have been presented to you by myself, Dr. Darity, Professor Holtzapple, Kathy, Karen, Jody, and others, have you investigated any of what we said, or do you seek information from the very same people whose job is directly tied to the voting machines? This county has spent well over $2 million on voting equipment, repairs, and machines, where you could have paid citizens to work the elections like we used to vote, whereby the convenience factor does not outweigh community engagement. Delete countywide polling program, that's my ask. The decorum of not insulting or demeaning any individual or group did not go both ways during my time of attending public meetings. Three of you were present when a backroom label was placed upon several of us private citizens, who did and continue to speak at the public comment section. No apology, no acknowledgement that it was inappropriate, inexcusable, or that it was regretful. Your silence is loud. Since the inner east loop revelations have dominated the citizenry, I have a few comments to make, and I haven't spoken on it. Forgiveness is easier to get than permission, but that does not roll back the hands of time and extract the harm of what has been sown. I will quote and paraphrase from my founder's Bible, autographed by David Barton. Romans 13, "There is no authority except from God. God establishes governing authorities." 13:3, "For rulers are not a cause of fear for good behavior, but for evil. Rulers are servants of God; render to all what is due them." 13:8, "Ow nothing to anyone except to love one another, for he who loves his neighbor has fulfilled the law. You shall love your neighbor as yourself." 13:10, "Love does no wrong to a neighbor. Therefore, love is the fulfillment of the law." We will all have to answer to God for wrongs we do to our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus McDonald.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here voicing my opposition to the no east loop. I would like to start by following up on a comment by Mayor Bobby Gutierrez on a radio spot last week, saying that the quiddity contract between Brazos County and quiddity cannot be stopped. Within my 40 years of dealing in the business world, every contract has a termination clause. Go to that clause, exercise the verbiage in that clause, and the contract is terminated. In 2022, an off-cycle election year, less than one-third of the registered voters approved a $100 million bond to fund repairs and improvements to existing roads stated in the bond. The north loop east was not stated in the bond. The wording in the bond is so vague that it lends the $100 million to be utilized by the county any way that it wants to, even projects not listed in the bond. In future, I'm hoping that the voters will exercise better judgment when voting for bonds, and only vote for bonds that have explicit use and wording within those bonds, detailed uses for funds raised. On the same ballot, there was the funding of the RMA by adding $10 to license plates. That was the second on the voting bill at that time, and the residents voted no for that funding. Back to the contract between quiddity and Brazos County. If we're going to make that a complete study, then I would suggest that these be included. The traffic study and environmental studies, those studies should be made available to the public for transparency before the county makes a decision. Include the economic impact of the dilution of the customer base to local businesses. Just look at the varsity restaurant. Just look at the varsity restaurant and all the empty buildings in Bryan College Station. The buildings, the building of Highway 6 still has a diluting effect on the businesses along Texas Avenue. You can see it by the empty buildings, and those businesses are still trying to recover from the decrease in the volume of customers. Do include the increase in crime that comes along with the loop. The loops are known in other urban areas as crime corridors. They allow for criminals, easy access to get on and get off, and come in and steal heavy equipment, and get back on the loop, and vacate the area. Those crime stats are available and should be included in the study. Houston, Austin, DFW, San Antonio are examples of what the citizens of Brazos County don't want. We don't want runaway urban sprawl. It is a lack of urban sprawl that draw those people to come make a home in Brazos County. And I'm going to circle back to the MPO and the RMA. In the bylaws of the MPO, in Article 1, Organizational Structure of the MPO states, "The MPO shall examine the needs and desires of its citizens to serve in the Brazos County metropolitan planning area and develop projects and plans based upon those needs and desires." I suggest that that criteria has not been met. The loop is not needed, and nor do the citizens of the county desire it. Into the governance of the MPO and the RMA, the MPO has both elected and non-elected personnel appointed to the board. Therefore, the citizens have recourse. If the MPO wanders from the proposed mission and wants to refound it, we can vote them out.
That's your time, sir.
Time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that's the last one for number two. So we will move on to presentation and discussion, presentation and discussion by Brazos County Trip 22, update by Innovative Transportation Solutions, ITS. John Poulster.
Judge Commissioners, I don't usually keep my phone on the dais, but my son and daughter-in-law went into the hospital last night for a baby, and they've been laboring ever since. Well, she's been laboring. He's just been watching, so I just want to be able to see that if something comes in. I want to take a few minutes to start by going over a few things that are not necessarily in the report, but because we have essentially a new court since the 2020 timeframe when we started this. I think back then, you had Earl McCauley, Nancy Berry, Steve Aldridge, Russ Ford, and the judge were on the court at the time, and so we just want to give some background on how we got here. Back in August or September of 2019, ITS, oh Barry Hurd with ITS is here with us, he's a part of our staff, he's a TechStut, decades-long ex-TechStut. We were invited to Brazos County to meet with Mr. Aldridge, Nancy Berry, and Dennis Christensen to talk about what it is that we do for other clients. We briefed them. They suggested we meet with the judge to talk to him. We did that, and they then suggested that we meet with the stakeholders, which we did, Texas A&amp;M, Relus, Bryan College Station, TechStut, and the MPO, and determined that there was a potential for a bond program that would assist the transportation needs of the region. So the court went out for a RFQ in August of 2020. We submitted, and we were selected as most qualified. During that time, once we were selected between August and November, we worked with your financial advisor to determine the value or the total dollar amount that the court could issue without impacting their debt service side of their tax rate. And then we met with the stakeholders, determined those projects that were most critical to them. Now, one of the things I want to point out, because I've heard a lot of conversations about this, when we met with TechStut, TechStut is very good at delivering projects that are on their high priority list. So a lot of the projects that have been mentioned that need to be improved, they're taking the lead on those projects, and we don't need to get in the way with those. What we asked them for was that next-tier projects, they were in that next cycle of projects they wanted to get to but don't have the consultant budget for or the PM services to do. They gave us their list. We went and met with Bryan, College Station, we met with MPO, and that's how we came up with a list of projects that, as you all have heard us say, the bond program did pass in November 2022, and it included, forward, backwards, am I pointing in the wrong direction? I got it. I just made it work.
Okay.
I'm illiterate on these things. So I just said that 22 passed 100 million. Oh. That was the list of projects that were on the website for the county and on the PACS website. All those projects, with the exception of the inner loop east, are explicitly TechStut-related projects. The east inner loop, should it move forward past preservation of corridor, will probably ultimately be an on-system project, but that'll be determined by other folks in the future. The rest of those are all on-system. The only thing that's not is the county roads, and what we, the reason we say various is because essentially what the county really needs is material, because the county road is much easier to build than a state facility, so we put money in for them to be able to do county roads throughout the county over time. So that was the list of projects in the bond program. And that list, again, was based on when we met with Bryan College Station, Texas A&amp;M, Relus, MPO, and that was the next-tier project below what TechStut's already working on in their 10 or 12-year period. The voters also had a chance, am I doing that or somebody else doing that?
Our clicker is not working.
It was magic. The voters also were asked to approve a Proposition B, which was a $10 fee for the vehicle registration for Brazos County Regional Mobility. As you know, the voters rejected that. All of the material, the county did not put out any material related to this ballot initiative, but all of the statements that were made about what the RMA would be used for were made by others and not by the county. So why are we pushing on the second-tier TechStut projects that they want done but just don't have the manpower to do it? When we started our bond program in 22, since then, the National Highway Construction Cost Index has gone up 70%. And if you turn to the next one, the state's not doing much better. During that timeframe, when we did our bond program, costs have gone up by 68%. So this is the reason why we want to expedite those specific, explicit, is it working? This is why we want to move on those projects. So you've heard a lot talked about the MPO. It guides regional mobility, it conducts traffic studies and growth analysis, it manages, this is important, the federal and state transportation investment, it coordinates with the local governments in planning through federal mandates, and it coordinates the funding for key projects. So the MPO, we hear a lot about all these projects that are needed in the interim, and they are needed, and that's why TechStut's moving out on them now. But what the MPO's federal guideline requirement to do isn't to look at 10 years down the road. They are currently looking at 2045, and they're updating their mobility plan for the region, the metropolitan area boundary, for 2050 as required by law, and they are assuming all of the projects that have been mentioned today are already built and on the ground and operational, when they make a recommendation for projects in the out-years, 2036, 2040, 2045, and 2050. So they determine the timing, and they're not looking at 10 years from now, they're looking at 20, 30 years from now, and that's because they have to by law. So the MPO will make the determination by law when any of these projects, including the inner loop, is warranted based on the traffic modeling that they do. All they asked us to do, and the only thing the county committed to do, was to work on protecting the corridor. So we have to work within the confines of the MPO. Yeah, it's me.
I got you.
I need to short things out. So we broke them down into two categories, projects that we need to do planning on, and then projects that we're going to partnership either with future planning or with funding. And when we got to this point in selecting which projects we'd start first, we went to College Station and asked them what their priority was, we went to Bryan, went to TechStut, and went to the MPO, and these were the four projects that we were asked to start with, and that's the inner loop, 47, 21, FM 1688, and SH 30. And we'll go through that in more detail in a second, but I want to, because we have a new court, I want to go over the next slide, a little bit about what happens behind the scenes. So like I just said, after we reviewed the bond projects, we met with Brazos County TechStut and identified those four cities by meeting with the stakeholders and basically tried to make sure we had projects that covered all four quarters of the county. As a normal course of business, we provide progress reports every month. In the early 2025, this was statewide, we had this all over the state, TechStut started slowing down their consultant budgets. Some of them were completely stopped altogether. We were able to coordinate with the Bryan District since we were managing these projects to keep our projects moving forward without any pause or slowdown due to the statewide consultant pause. So we basically lead the project teams for all of these projects. If anything goes wrong, we're the bottom-line buck stops there, and it's our responsibility to move these projects forward. So we're going to go into the four projects that are in planning, and I'm going to, again, because this may or may or not be something that the new members of the court are familiar with, I'm going to go into a little granular detail on what exactly we do for each of these projects over time. So for each of the four projects, our firm developed the scope of services in conjunction with Texas Department of Transportation, it's their projects. Based on our 30-plus years of doing this, we would estimate a fee for those engineering services, so we have a budget. We helped the purchasing department draft the request for qualifications for each of those projects, and we worked with TechStut, this is important, to develop the consultant selection team for procurement. So one of the things that we do that's unique to say like the Rio Grande Valley is when we do on-system projects, we request and are usually given permission to have two TechStut members, we have a three-person selection committee, so two of the people on the selection committee that selected the firms for these projects were TechStut employees familiar with these projects. And so Barry acts as the manager and serves as advisor to the consultant selection work team through purchasing, and what we've done over the 30 years of time, we've had attorneys develop contracts that are centric towards the county as opposed to the consultants. The consultants typically try to get you to sign a contract that's favorable to them. Over the 30 years we've been doing this, we developed a contract, a template, that protects the county and gives the consultant as much flexibility as they need. That scope and that contract is designed to do two things. First is to protect the county. Second is to allow the project firm to be picked to be able to do, take a project through what I call cradle-to-grave, which is your control schematic, your environmental assessment, which is where we're going to stop on the inner loop, but the next step is the right-of-way acquisition, the utility relocation, the design of the project, and then the construction, engineering, and inspection services. So all of the contracts are exactly the same, and the only services that we intend to move forward on right now for the five or six that are explicitly TechStut is the environmental clearance. For the inner loop, that's the only thing we're going to do is environmental clearance. But all the contracts are exactly the same, because once we get to environmental clearance, if TechStut says we can't afford, because we don't have consultant's budget for it, to do the PSNE, you've already, through your procurement process, qualified to that firm to move to the next phase, but it's in additional services. So until the county exercises those additional services, the contractor can't move forward on it, so it's up to the county on that. So on those on-system projects that you see, we anticipate that the state will want us to proceed to those next phases of development. And it's those phases when I say, once we get those steps done, environmental clearance, right-of-way, utility relocated, and the right-of-way map done, that's when I've said I've got success at getting those projects funded in the near term. The process includes all four of those steps. On the inner loop, we are only doing the preservation of the corridor. So I didn't get done, I was only halfway. So what we also do is make sure, because we've done probably fourscore of these, I think, and we manage the consultant to make sure that all of the need for processes are cleared, there's processes we have to follow. If we don't follow them, we're subject to lawsuits in the future or retromaned by EPA. So we ensure the project moves through the processes with minimal delay. We work in coordination with the TechStut Design Division and the Bryan District to come up with alternative analysis for those alignments that are needed for this community, because they have a design manual, but each community is different. So we try to, and you'll see when we get to the individual projects where we tweak those. So now we're going to get into what I call the back office stuff. So the other thing we do is we come alongside your auditor, and we make sure all the consultants have timely submissions of their invoices. We make sure they have verified charges and progress that ensures that the charges correlate to what the progress is in the contract. We ensure prompt payment by processing those invoices to the auditor quickly. We verify everything by line item. We submit a monthly invoice to the county auditor for payment, so it comes from the consultant. We do a cover memo saying we reviewed this in detail, and we recommend payment by the court. And then as those reports come in from the consultants, we review them, and then we put them together in the report that we give y'all every month. And that last statement is, we manage anything else that comes out of the woods that needs to be stomped down. Okay. So now we're going to get into the projects that we're working on right now, the four that are, that we're carrying through the process. Three of them are on-system, and one of them is the inner loop. This one is SH 47 along 47, SH 21. See, my eye works. I guess. Binkley Barfield is the consultant. Are y'all here? Want to stand up and say, no, you can only say a few words, but you can't stand up. We need to know who to go after. The construction estimate right now is about 204 million, and the location's less relevant because we already know where it is, but what we're proposing to do at the end of the project, if it gets through all the regulatory processes and funded, is to reconfigure 47 and 21 interchange, construct grade separation overpasses at 47 and Fifth, and 21 at a new street they haven't named yet. So where we're at now is, Binkley Barfield has been doing data collection and doing fieldwork. They had a public meeting, we'll get to it, the first one is on the next slide, but the second was planning to be done in the fall or summer of this year. We're at 30% review held for the schematic, and we have a design, they're having a design conference with Texas to do the design summary report update, and they're working on a technical report. So an environmental assessment isn't a long document that you have to read ad nauseam. It's technical reports based on all those things that you see when you go to a public meeting, where those criterias that we have to hit for, on what the impacts are. And then part of the next step is to prepare write-of-entry letters, and what those do is allow the engineers to go out and do survey work so they can tie down the exact the exact location of the project and determine any impacts associated inside those right-of-way lines. So this is where I was staying. First meeting was back in summer, in twenty-four, summer, fall. Right now, we're at sixty, we're headed towards sixty percent schematic approval. The value engineering, which is what we're probably going to have to come back to the county on and talk to, they're getting close, it's very distracting. I don't remember where I was.
Value engineering.
Value engineering. So Tech Dot has kind of informed us that their consultant budget, we would have to wait till September for a new budget, which we understand that every district is going through that. And so we want to keep our schedule moving. We may come back to the county and suggest that we pick up the cost, it's a nominal cost for value engineering. So what they have to do is go in and a third-party entity, and this Tech Dot folks, go in, look at the plan set that is being done, and then suggest ways to minimize the cost of the project. And then because of the timing on these projects, what Tech Dot does in the Bryan district is, post one or two public meetings that are in person, they roll to a virtual public meeting, and that they're planning a virtual public meeting sometime in the fall of 2025. Once that's done, they'll finalize the schematic, and then the environmental clearance will be submitted for review by Tech Dot ENV, which is the surrogate for the U.S. Federal Highway Administration. And if we get past that, they'll give us a letter called SFP, sufficient for further processing, or we call it a finding of no significant impact or a Fonzie. So that's the schedule for the forty-seven, twenty-one interchange. And we have had very minimal concern, people have not pushed back on this project, they want it. So again, because it's a new court, I want to go ahead and just kind of go through a little bit more granular. So again, we help with the design concept conference where we set the parameters, and you'll see here in a second what that means, where we coordinate with Binkley, Barfield, Brazos County, Relus, Tech Dot, to ensure future development on Relus campus will be served to provide both roadway and pedestrian and bicycle elements. And so we've done that to make sure that active transportation is included in all of the improvements we're doing. And everything we do, we go back to our stakeholders and say, is this what you want, including our locals and Tech Dot? And so we're meeting every two weeks with Binkley and Barfield to make sure we hit our schedules and we deal with any issues that may come up, either technically or regulatorily that we can handle, because there's a pretty good chance we've seen it somewhere. And we helped on the public meeting, get all that set structured for November fourteenth, and we're working for the next one, the fall of this year. Next project, I forgot to turn my pages, hold on. Okay, it's FM sixteen-eighty-eight from SH forty to twenty-eight eighteen. Okay, it's RG Miller. RG Miller is local, they got bought out by DCCN, but RG Miller, you guys here? Oh, there you go. So kind of the local folks. The estimate right now is forty-six million. And if we get it through all the regulatory steps that we need to get done, we're looking at widening an existing two-lane road to a four-lane roadway, improve the intersection for mobility and safety. I'll tell you more about that in a second. And provide continuous shared use paths for the pedestrian and bicycles. What I mean by improve intersection mobility and safety is, obviously, there's been some concerns about medians in this area. So not wanting to pick a fight, we worked with Tech Dot, and they were very amenable to all this, to only put medians closer at the signals so that you can separate movement for safety and not preclude left-turning movements for the overwhelming majority of sixteen-eighty-eight. So we've submitted a couple of alternatives we worked on, I think there'll be some notes on that, so we'll go to that one. So right now, RG Miller is doing their survey and right-of-way work to identify the impact of the schematic. They're collecting their actual geotech, which is what's underneath the ground, and they're doing their field reviews and their constraint map, which is all those things that we have to show our impacts on. And the roadway and traffic, this is all the stuff where we're analyzing the alignments, their conceptual alternatives, and their impacts. By the way, they'll be, never mind, I'll get to it. Presented two schematic alternatives, because we were talking about the medians and trying to minimize those impacts, and what they do to traffic operations. And right now, we're trying to do, on drainage, what's out there now, so that we can roll in what we're going to do for the schematic ultimately. So we're here at the design concept area. We're having stakeholder meetings. Stakeholder meetings with the elected officials and the people that tell us what they want on the road. And we are working towards a sixty percent submittal on the schematic. In the fall of this year, we're going to have another public meeting. We'll have a VE study, and we are going to start on the technical report, and we should be at ninety-five percent submittal on the schematic by the end of this year, so that by spring of 2026, we can submit our document to the state and feds for review, and if it passes, environmental clearance, and that environmental clearance assumes a hundred percent schematic approval.
Most people just are going to know that as Leonard Road.
So I'm a Tech Dot guy by heart, so I always name them by the number. Leonard Road, that's on Barry. Okay, so again, on this Leonard Road, we worked on the design concept with everybody. We had the stakeholders meetings, we meet bi-weekly with RG Miller. We worked with Ottawa stakeholders to coordinate bicycle and pedestrian elements, inconsistent with the city of Bryan's master plan. We work with everybody on public involvement and how that works. Again, make sure they don't mess up anything on the environmental side, and we work with them on the public meetings that's going to come in the fall, and we assist the consultant to ensure drafting of initial utility conflicts, which everywhere we go, there are utilities. And the utility relocation is usually the longest critical path on a project. So knowing what's out there early helps us, helps us. Okay.
Harvey.
Harvey, Harvey Road. From Associates to FM one fifty-eight, that's okay, that's okay. The injured Landstar, are y'all guys here? Couldn't make it. Oh, there he is, Chris O'Cutie, yeah, there he is. I worked with Chris on a lot of projects. Currently, the construction is fifty-nine million bucks, if we get through all the four stages of the environmental regulatory project delivery stage. Our intent is to widen it from two to four-lane roadway with intersection improvements for mobility and safety, continuous shared use path, which is a ten-foot or better for pedestrians and bicycles. They're right now in their collection of field data, roadway. They're working on evaluating intersection alternatives for improved mobility, which means turning movements. They're looking at what, checking on their right-of-way matrix, and I mean, the right-of-way impacts and the utility matrix, determining conflicts. Still working on a typical cross-section here, based on what we get feedback from our stakeholders. Drainage will inform a lot of that. We got to take into consideration Carter's Creek. And then we have to use traffic both from what's out there now, plus what we think is going to be the design year, which is twenty years from now. And then we got to work at dealing with issues at Veterans Park and the events. So what we do is, if you have regular events on some of these roads, we try to make sure that the road in its future condition will accommodate those future events. And we're currently working on public meeting documents and finalizing technical reports to fit together upon the right-of-way approval by the state. This is where we are. We are redefining, refining the schematic design. We're working on the technical reports. We're planning on having a public meeting in summer, and then VE will be this fall. We'll prepare a final schematic for review. At that time, we'll submit all the technical reports in a combined document called the environmental assessment. Hopefully, if we get it all right, we get cleared by summer 2026, and that assumes a hundred percent schematic approval by the state. So these are getting redundant, but we do all the same things. The most important part is, with Landstar, we've made sure we had the bicycle and pedestrian elements in the design to minimize, put them in in a way that would minimize the right-of-way impact, and we're planning on, just trying to minimize the right-of-way on that project as much as possible. Last, but not least, the interlude piece from Six to Fitch, you're showing here the original technically preferred alternative corridor, which is the green corridor, but the black line was the actual MPO alignment. And now you're seeing a new southern or western alignment that has a study corridor. And that corridor is because, if you've been to a public meeting, you'll see, we talk about impacts five hundred feet off of the center line of the roadway. So we have to have a wider band for impacts than what the actual footprint of the road will be, which is, will vary. So this is just a...
The band is a thousand foot wide each side.
Five hundred each side. My apologies, you're right. Oh, Quiddity, you guys want to stand up? And your team. Yeah, all right. Okay. Why are we doing this? I don't know if you can see this, but this is like Where's Waldo. You can see, we put the two alternatives inside the heat map. What a heat map is, is we go to all the communities, all the cities around us, and we go to all the development folks, and we ask, where are the developments that have, they're graded by how far along they are in the process? And you've got them color-coded by each segment, and so the darker the color, the more imminent the development. And so you'll see that there is already a lot of development that we're having to serpentine through even in 2025. So it was just informational. Next. So, oh, now, he already stood up, so you can't do it again. Current estimate is three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Now, one of the things I want to point out is, I've done, I've done probably twelve billion dollars worth of roadway improvements over thirty years. So I know how to, I'm pretty good at calculating costs, because I have to make sure not overpay. Typical for environmental clearance, which is what Quiddity's getting paid to do, is about one to one-and-a-half percent of the total cost of construction. So that would be thirty-five to fifty million bucks, or I don't know if I can do that in my math right, I went to North Texas. But Quiddity's contract is point zero-three percent of the cost of construction, so I think we're getting a good deal for the total cost of the construction percentage-wise. But since we're not going through all the process to get it ready, the proposed improvements are listed, because when we do an environmental assessment and we draw a schematic, the schematic has to reflect what the future will be, so that the schematic will show a four-lane divided superstreet, which all that means is it has fewer cross-streets and a lot more free flow than a normal arterial. And it's going to be talking about increased traffic due to development. Now, I got to turn my page. So every environmental assessment, you go to the next page, starts with feasibility. So when you saw that there were seven or eight alignments, all went in a band, we were looking at which, any of these were feasible or not in that process. And as you narrow down to one or two projects that become feasible, then the feasibility part of the environmental assessment's done, and then you roll into the environmental assessment phase, which is where Quiddity is now. And in the environmental assessment, it requires you, it requires you to answer two questions. What's the need of this project, and what's the purpose of this project? And remember what I told you. We are using the MPO demographics for a roadway that's not slated in their plan till the out-years of their plan. And so A assumes all the infrastructure between now and then is in and operational, and it assumes the volumes that are going to be there then. And so when we talk about the purpose and need, we have to use the demographics that are going to be in place in the future, not today. And we do all those things. We've had two public meetings, we're planning a third, it'll probably be virtual at some point in the future, or not, depending on what we work out. And we are now at the process, next page, of, we're here, we just had the second public meeting. The next step is to identify that preferred alternative has the least impact, and then we move into putting together the technical reports for that alignment, rights of entry for surveying work, so we can nail down. And right now, the intent is, before we get to the environmental assessment submission timeframe, we're hoping to reduce, right now, there's two houses in one alternative being displaced, and eighty-one parcels being impacted. We're hoping to get that eighty-one parcels down more by going out and doing detailed survey work onsite to determine if there's tweaks we can make. One of the tweaks is, right now, we're assuming a seventy mile an hour design speed, because that's where you start. We can lower that to fifty miles, which will make the turn curves be able to be more tight, which means we could probably miss more parcels. So that's the next stage, is to take the impacts that we have on a locally technically preferred alternative, and then continue to compress those impacts by design elements. So we're anticipating, going forward, on the current schedule, to be ready for environmental clearance sometime mid-2026. So these are all the things, everybody's lived it. We've had two public meetings already, and the intent is to continually to refine the alignment, to minimize impacts as much as possible, and continue to work with the Bryan district to ensure the alternatives analysis environmental process meets all state and federal guidelines. And we're working with Quiddity and the county and Tech Dot to work on all the informational video y'all got, and we are, we have weekly, if not every two or three-day meetings with Quiddity on issues that come up. Okay, at this point, it's not on the list, because we just found out. We've been talking about, when we redid the alignment to do a second alternative, we were going to run the traffic analysis to determine whether or not that other alignment met the definition of the purpose and need for the project in the MPO's definition for an out-year project. We have that data tomorrow. Quiddity will put that macro information up on the county's website for everybody to look at. But as we go in and environmentally clear, survey, and analyze the alignment more, we will tighten down those traffic numbers to be more specific to each intersection. And when we get to a certain point in the process, the state and the feds require us to have our methodology and our means of our traffic assumptions third-party validated. So that means we go, submit the data to TTI, and they come back and say, you got this wrong, or you got it right. So you don't, the county's not going to have to take Quiddity's word that the modeling is right. Tech Dot's not going to have to take your word, their word, because we're going to have it third-party validated by law, by TTI, to make sure that the calculation assumptions we make are true. Now, we're going to go to the three partnership projects, and that's a loose term, because right now, we got one project that we have a partnership on right now, and the other two, the partnership could be either doing an engineering work for the state or providing funding towards some other third thing like construction. And those are, y'all call it, I got to call it Bushweldon, right? Right? Doug taught me that. So next slide. So early on in the project, right when we started even thinking about doing the bond program, putting things together, we went to Tech Dot headquarters and said, what would it take to help bridge the gap? Because that's the one thing Dan Rudge and Tech Dot asked us to help on, was bridging the gap on Bushweldon. And we, they said, look, if you'll give us roughly somewhere around fifteen million bucks, we'll be able to cover the remaining twenty-five. Now, remember, they've already covered them up with like sixty, sixty-five million dollars of other people's money. So we're getting, going to get a hundred million plus interchange for fifteen million dollars on leveraging. And the AFA, as you see, has already been executed, and we're waiting for Tech Dot. Tech Dot thinks they're going to let it, Barry?
They're thinking, maybe they'll move it by, they're into twenty-six.
Sometime early twenty-six. And the good news is it'll let, the bad news is, there's going to be a construction job there. At sometime between now and then, I got to work with Katie on getting with y'all on an issuance timeframe and how it impacts your debt service to be able to issue that debt to, because they'll send you a warrant. to be able to issue that debt to, because they'll send you a warrant. Since the AFA's already done, they'll just send you a warrant request. And then you got 60 days to pay. So we gotta be ahead of that curve. Covered all that. Okay, so SH40. So these are future projects. And the intent is from Arrington to SH6 to find, there's a lot of conflicting crossing movements here. And our intent, what we were asked to look at, is find a way to make the, this part of the road flow better through intersection improvement. So at some point in the future, when we're getting the workload that we're working on now done and your debt service allows, we're going to move into this project for improvements. And then the last one, again, is 2018 from 60 to 6. And just look at the future needs for expansion or intersection blowouts. And that's a future project we were asked to look at when our finances and the state wants us to do, afford it. And that brings us to questions from the court.
Questions?
A lot of information.
Yes, ma'am.
Takes a lot of absorption.
My brother says I'm halfway to being an idiot, so, Ma'am.
Two and a half years on the court, it's a lot of information. I mean, I'm aware of some of it, but the details that you've given us is, takes some absorption.
Yes, ma'am.
As we said, marinating on it.
Anytime you want to call. Barry's your project manager. We're here regularly. Every time I drive here, I bring a storm. Last time I came here, there was a bad storm. So I try not to come very often, but Barry's here all the time. That's metaphorical and meteorological.
Your monthly report, who does that go to?
We send it to the judge, and I think Marcia sends it out to everybody. But if you want, we can go ahead and send it out to all the commissioners directly. That's easy enough to do. It's just one button. And we can make this, we'll put this, we'll make this, put this up on the county's website so y'all, anybody that wants to access it can get to it. It's public record.
Well, thank you, John. There's a, I know that there's a lot of work that goes into all these projects that the county has committed to. So I appreciate your effort and all you do. I know I was talking to our engineer the other day, and she actually said, I wouldn't do it for the amount of money that they're doing. They do a lot of work for us, for the county. So it was a compliment to what y'all do and for what you are doing for the county. So I appreciate that. Any more questions? If there's none, then we'll end the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John. We will consider and take action on agenda items 4 through 28. Number four is selection of public members of the alternates to serve in Brazos County Salary Grievance Committee for calendar year 2025 pursuant to section 152.1.015 of the Texas Government Code. And I've got them ready. Okay. Somebody ready to take them down? Do I need to read that first? Okay. Pursuant to 152.015 Texas Local Government Code, Texas, the county judge is required to draw names from a list of grand jurors from the preceding year of salary grievance committee. I will draw all 42 names to determine the order in which they would be selected for the committee. The first nine that agree to serve will form the official committee, and the remainder will serve as alternates. Once the names have been selected, they will receive letters from Brazos County with further instructions. After the drawing, we'll need a motion and a second to approve the selection. Lacy Smith. Paul Baylor. James Hardy. Shirena Peterson. Erin Porter. Joe Munsey. Guy Wagner. Michael Luna. Trixie Roy. John Gimney. Blake Lipsom. Hayden Bell. Deborah Schaefer. Margaret Nally. David Cooper. Christian Paul Deloan. Taylor O'Donnell. Sajid Sykha. Carlisle Frazier. Kathy Belaydi. Sarah Johnson. Wyatt McKinnon. Natalie Price. Kelsey Crafta. Stephen Wukowski. Hung New Win. Jeffrey Hurst. Rachel Garcia. James Garrett. Cynthia Stowers. Christina Letourne. John Mitchell. Carlos Rodriguez. William Kenmore. Crystal Sestic. Guy Benson. Philip Galgler. Jolynn Hayes. Cynthia Gago. Sean Fei. Kathy Parker. Martha Gober. I need a motion, I think, in a second to... Second? Motion made second to accept those as a grievance committee in that order as they accept. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is approval requested from treasurer's office to update the designated representative to the truest master of resolution.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested from treasurer's office for text pool resolution amending authorized representatives.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is consideration of the general land office contract, number 24-065278F144 for improvements from Elm Circle, Willow Circle, Mimosa Circle in the amount of $500,000 streets located precinct for the grants, Community Block Grant Development Grant Fund.
I will move for approval for the consideration of the grant. Anyone who's ever done a grant, you need to understand that, well, you should understand that in preparing for a grant, you do your due diligence in terms of preparation for the grant. You cross your Ts, you dot your Is to try to meet the guidelines required by the grant. I am hesitant to consider the grant because once we receive the grant, the amount of, the criteria for the grant requires that our staff go above and beyond. Once you write the grant, they've done the due diligence, but the amount of work that it takes to meet the criteria for the grant is making it more difficult to accept the grant because of the amount of work, the amount of manpower to accept the grant. So, and Charles may need to help me in my explanation of this. The possibility of accepting the grant may not be worth accepting the grant because the criteria is just too much. Am I correct? Am I even getting near there?
I think we just have a motion. I don't think we've had a second or a vote to get us into discussion.
We'll second the motion for discussion.
Motion for discussion. Okay.
Okay.
I seconded it, so we can discuss it.
So I understand, we at one time were, we looked for a grant for the Brazos Center to put a generator out there that would help us in, you know, times when we were in need of, if there were people that were fleeing from hurricanes on the coast. And as it turned out, it was going to cost us more money using the grant that they were offering for us than if we bought the generator on our own and replaced it because of all of the federal tape that you had to go through. And that may be this case, or this similar case.
Am I correct on that? What it would take to accept the grant far outweighs the benefit.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that sort of put it in a nutshell?
It does. In many ways, the relief for the residents for the improvements that are going to be made to that area, Ms. Parthenik can speak on it. But if we go through the grant processes and the solicitations that we have to do, we cannot use any existing contracts for engineering. We have an IDIQ engineering contract, surveying, geotech, materials testing, stuff like that. We can't use any of that. We have to go solicit all of that, all of those services independently for this project. And so the solicitation time alone puts it out months into next fiscal year. Road and Bridge, according to talking to Ms. Parthenik and them, the guys are ready to go. They're already doing work in the neighborhood. They estimate that the materials will cost about $50,000. And if we go with a grant, then we have to pay additional for engineering and all that we would not need if our own forces perform that work themselves. So if we don't use the grant, we don't have to pay a bunch of additional fees for engineers and all. Sorry, guys. We don't have to pay a bunch of additional fees. Our guys know how to do the work, what needs to be done anyway, for drainage and road surface and all, and we can do it quicker. If we do the grant, then we have to encumber additional time to get the engineering, the surveying, so forth, and the compliance aspect, which Ms. Parthenik can speak some to the work.
Yeah, just to touch on the scope of work for, sorry, Prathna Benergy, county engineer. The scope of work for the said roads, the three roads that we talked about, are basically everyday bread butter type work that our guys are very familiar doing. We do not need a set of plans. Our crews can get over there in the next week or so. But if we actually approved this grant, or, you know, yeah, accepting this grant, it not only increases the cost of the project 100,000 times? 500,000, basically. We can get it done within 50,000, so the times amount of that. And then just time-wise, we can get there, like I said, next week. If we actually considered this grant, we wouldn't be getting there until at least next year. If that's the, you know, the fastest that prob, this is just a guess. It might be even pushed out further than that. So I, it is my recommendation that we, you know, get there. I know it takes a lot, and it's already taken our staff and us to prepare for this grant. It's taken already a lot of hours. And despite of that, I think it is not good use of our resources moving further to, you know, accept this money and, you know, waste even more of our time and effort. And it's just way more time-consuming to do, accept this grant than actually get it done ourselves. We can get there. We can, the project's scope is very limited. It's not that bad in a shape. We can, like I said, it's a very, you know, regular bread butter type project for us. We can get there. We'll get in and out very quickly. We'll be done, you know, within a few months at the very max in terms of time. So I hope that you take that into consideration.
Yes, so.
So the motion should be, I mean, I know we've got a motion in a second, but I think that was maybe, I wasn't sure whether...
Maybe amend the motion to say, vote to not consider, not consider this grant because of...
Perhaps maybe not to approve...
Not to approve.
Acceptance of the grant.
So maybe we withdraw that first motion and second, and then, yeah.
You're right. So I'm recommending that we not...
Rescind that.
amend or rescind the initial motion. Is that the wording?
Yeah, rescind your initial.
So I'm going to make a motion to rescind my initial motion.
That I'll rescind my second.
Okay, so that motion is off the table. Now we need a motion to...
I move to not accept the grant, given the cost of the grant. Cost and manpower of the grant.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made seconded to not accept the grant. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval requested from Brazos County Mercy Services District, number three for 30-day extension to be no later than July 1, 2025 for submission of annual financial audit report. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval requested from Human Resources to write off outstanding accounts receivable in an amount of $744.16. This amount is believed to be uncollectible.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made seconded to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. And number 10 is approval of the following job description, Fair Administration B0843 Assistant Manager.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is authorization of county judge to sign extension of tolling agreement originally approved and executed in the Commissioners' Court, January 23, 2024.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made seconded, and I think I've got Kathy Vines will speak.
Judge, can you have a discussion about what this exactly entails? I don't recall that meeting in '24.
Okay, so this was, we were having issues with the contractor. All this does is extend the time that a lawsuit could be filed if it were necessary, either for one of the contractor or for the county. It's both sides agreeing, we're going to extend it. There's usually a two-year limit. And so we've already extended it once. We're extending it again because we're working through all the issues. And hopefully, there won't be any other issue to go that far. But it is, nobody wants to lose that ability to be able to move forward if they had to with a...
Well, what is this tolling agreement?
Tolling.
I'll let, I'll let counsel explain.
So let me, let me lead with, it has nothing to do with toll roads because we had that when this first came up. So there's a statute of limitations for filing on breach of a contract. We are in contract with a number of entities doing work out at the Juvenile Justice Center. That work had some issues, and we've been going through those issues. It's gone from, I think, probably three pages of issues. It's gone from, I think, probably three pages of issues down to a half a page of issues, and they are working on those. But even though we were working in cooperation with the contractors to fix, fix the issues, we would have had to have filed a lawsuit to keep our rights alive. And instead, we do a tolling agreement where all the parties agree that a lawsuit does not have to be filed for an additional period. We're at the end of that first period, we're making amazing progress, but the tolling agreement extends that statute of limitations.
Specifically about the juvenile center?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because it didn't detail that. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of First Amendment, third reinstatement of Brazos Valley-wide Area Communication System, BVWAX, inter-local agreement, ILA, to approve First Amendment of BVWAX managing entity, ILA, to Brazos Valley Council of Governments. This will admit Robinson County as a member of the BVWAX regional radio system.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Kathy, I think you want to speak on that.
Yes, can you please have a conversation about that? What is this exactly, and how does that impact us?
Okay, so, I don't remember what year BVWAX was created, but it's a radio system that started in Brazos County with our local, two cities, county, the emergency services district, through the COG. And since then, we have tried to reach out to our surrounding counties, and if they were willing and wanted to, they could join in. It actually lowers the cost because for every radio that's in that system, it spreads the cost out, and it gives operability to, to our neighbors who may need help, or we may need their help one day, so.
Does this relate in any way to the 911 expansion and all that, or are they totally separate?
It's not 911, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of change order number two, CIP 23-608I, and GN, road reconstruction with Larry Young paving to deduct $54,973.63 for the contract for unused bid line items and liquidated damages. The new contract total will be $5,850,963.62.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval of contract 25-118 for project management software with Procore Technologies, Inc. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of renewal of bid 25-128R for jury summons with expedient mail.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Glad to see this is a local Brazos County company.
Yeah.
That's very nice. Since Commissioner Brown has not called in, I just thought.
Thanks, Commissioner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is permission to advertise RFP, CIP 25-531, Brazos County Administration Building Renovations.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and I think Jody Quimby want to speak on that.
Jody Quimby, 4686, River Garden Court, just wanted to get some information about this particular project, Brazos County Administration Building Renovations. I'm familiar with what RFP means, Request for Proposal, but what does CIP mean? And then, in addition to that, what's the scope of the project? Where is it going to, what's the renovation going to be? And where is it located in the, it's in the admin building here? When will it be expected to be done and start and complete? And then, how does this project relate to the new project across the street? The need for the new project across the street? You've got renovations going in here, you're adding a building over there, you know, why do we need both? And to justify that for us, please.
Okay, I don't know, I don't see, oh, there's Trevor, okay.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. CIP is Capital Improvements Project, that's an acronym we use internally. The scope for the project includes the renovation of the sanctuary, which has sat kind of pretty dormant since the county took the building. We did some minor improvements in there to make it work as a temporary courtroom for years, but we're actually going to be able to turn that into a second floor of office space for the county auditor, the budget office, and project management. And then, the first floor is going to be used for a redesigned, larger Commissioners Courtroom, as well as some smaller training, training-style, big, kind of medium-sized conference rooms, so that we don't have to put, as we start to build out and remodel other offices, so that we're not having to put a room of that size that may not get used but once a month in every building or suite that we build. So, it'll be there for departments to use. It also involves a remodel of the north wing over the gym, sort of the west side, north side of the building. Again, another space that never got a full remodel or build out during the time that we've owned the building. We used it temporarily while we were remodeling the courthouse, and we kind of shuffled departments back and forth into that space. But it will get a full remodel, and that'll be the new HR suite. There's some other smaller improvements to the records management area, the risk management area, but those are, those are the larger pieces. And then, as y'all will remember, the last year or so, we looked at the envelope of the building and realized that we are in dire need of a new envelope on the building to prevent moisture and outside air infiltration into the space. And so, that's the other big piece of this. As it relates to the 101, it's completely separate. The departments that would be going over there, one of them is housed in the old JP Court, kind of on the other side of that wall, that you can't see, but that would be part of some sort of future renovation to adapt that space for some future need. But right now, again, it's going to get, it's going to be exciting for the, for the folks working out of here. We don't currently have any open office space anywhere, and so, we're, everybody's going to have to adapt a little bit and kind of make it work through the noise and the construction, but we're going to come up with as good of a plan as we can to combat that. But the two projects are unrelated.
Would you just mention that this used to be a church? And so, now, we're reconfiguring it to be able to meet the needs of the constituents who want to come to court?
Absolutely.
That we'll have better podiums, we'll have better timers, that we'll have much better mics, and hopefully, much better air conditioning system, so I don't freeze to death.
Absolutely. Everything about it will be better than, than what we've got today.
Right, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Trevor. So, we got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number 17 is approval of the following committee, RFP, CIP, Brazos County Administration Building Renovations.
Move to approve A through H.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion, and I think Cindy wanted to speak on that.
I appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation with you again. I was just curious, and I'm not volunteering myself in any way, but on 17, I mean, on just general, when you guys form committees, you always pick employees of, of our county. And I'm just curious, what committees do you have, other than the Salary Committee, which you did today, do you actually bring in citizens, public, private citizens, to be part of committees that you guys form? Just curious.
Usually, it's going to be somebody that's affected by that, whatever that project is. If it's roads, it's going to be somebody from Road and Bridge. In this case, it's going to be the, the people who are going to be, actually be impacted by that project. It's usually how that happens.
Okay.
And Judge, we do, from time to time, have outside people for that very reason. When we did the Expo Center, we had a member from the agricultural community and another from the fair, because they're directly impacted by what we do out there at the Expo Center. So, there, there are opportunities for citizens.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is approval of the following service contract with Avonex.
Move for approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve A and B, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is request approval of final plaid of Southern Point subdivision in section 401, Block 81, lots 3R-1 through 3R-6, being a replaid of Block 81, Lot 3, 7.371 acres, Starett Smith, League Survey, A-210, College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, sites located precinct one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is considering take action on Frontier Communications. Did.
Number 20.
Does.
You said number 12.
Oh, I'm sorry, number 20, I'm sorry. I was looking at 20.
You were looking at 20.
Let's not go back.
No, we don't need to go back. Number 20 is considering take action on Frontier Communications utility permit to pull fiber optic cable through existing conduit with right-of-way of Arrington Road, Indian Lakes Drive. Project will include road bores of Mesa Vertige Drive, Arapaho Ridge Drive, Barn Stable Harbor, Sandpiper Cove, Pelicans Point Cove, sites located precinct one.
Move approval.
Oh, we need to move it. Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21, considering take action on the Frontier Communications utility permit to install 14,240 feet of fiber optic conduit within the right-of-way of Opera Steeney, Cliff Road, Warner Ranch Road. Project includes road board of Opera Steeney Road, Cliff Road, Coleman Street, sites located precinct two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is approval of expenditure journal entry of Brazos County's second quarter contribution to Brazos County Health District fiscal year 2024-25, in the amount of $119,507.25.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 23 is tax refund application for the following.
Move for approval A.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 24 is budget amendments, FY 24-25 budget amendments, 32.01 through 32.05.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 25 is personnel change of status, with the exception of Cody Starkey, who was scheduled to be on Expo. We'll accept that one right now, but approval of personnel status other than that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 26 is approval of payment of claims.
Move for, oh, go ahead.
Claims to be paid by Brazos County, A is 820-9843 through 820-9987, and then, 920-4487 through 920-4542.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We will skip down to number 29 is acknowledgment of FY 25, 2025 committed emergency fund calculation increasing the committed emergency fund to $3,917,235 to a total of $40,444,000 per resolution 24-113. And that's an acknowledgment. 30 is an acknowledgment of the investment report for quarter ending 3/31/25. And then, I think, Cindy want to speak on that?
So, my question on this is, so, reading this, and I don't know if the people pulled up the hyperlink or not, but for the first quarter, we earned on, the people's money was over $4 million in interest. And I'm curious, how, how do you put this back into the budget? Do you use this to offset unfunded mandates? And do you consider this in, when you are considering the property tax rate? Do you consider the monies, the interest where you're making off of the taxpayer monies? So, it's kind of a convoluted question, but.
Yeah, so, I, yeah, go ahead and have a seat. We, there's a calculation done at the beginning of budget year that the Auditor's Office normally does to estimate what.
You give me more credit, it's a crystal ball. It goes in as revenue, interest revenue. If you look in each fund, generally, interest follows principal, meaning the interest is credited to the fund that earned the interest, and it goes in as a revenue. We set the budget for interest revenue every year when we set, set the budget. So, yes, it is all considered part of funding for different county projects.
Unfunded mandates?
Yes. Yes, it's part of all the revenue, which includes court costs, fees, property tax, sales tax, contracted detention service, boy, I can almost recite the list, miscellaneous, when we sell auction, sell surplus goods, things like that, those are all considered the revenues, and they go to the different funds, depending on what generated them.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Number 31 is acknowledgment of FY 2024-25 budget taxes by fund as of May 21, 2025, and acknowledgment of FY 24-25 contingency budget taxes by fund as of May 21, 2025. 32 is acknowledgment of monthly reports submitted May 2025. 33 is juvenile directors' report on detention population. Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 30 juveniles in detention. We have 18 males, 12 females, and 34 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Linda. Number 34, Sher, report on inmate population. Sher.
Good morning. 726 in custody today, 634 men, 92 women. We have 52 on electronic monitoring.
Okay, thanks, Sher. 35 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none. We will go back up to number 27.
Judge, before we do that, can we read, reread number 29, and just make sure that we got those amounts correct?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I'll reread number 29, because I could have got it wrong.
Thank you.
An acknowledgment of the 2025 committed emergency fund calculation increasing the committed emergency fund by $3,917,235 to make it a total of $40,444,000 per resolution 24-013. Is that correct?
Thank you.
All right. We will now move to number 27 and convene an executive session pursuant to the following. And we've got three. And we've got three Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven two five to deliberate business, financial related contract being negotiated is, first is A, and then next is B. And I think we have to take action on, I guess, both of those.
Yes, sir, and I've submitted my written determination that it's not in the county's best interest to negotiate those in open court, and ask you to move into executive session to discuss those contracts.
So can we take both of those at the same time to get a motion in a second for both?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
A motion to deliberate an executive on those two.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded. It's gonna have to be unanimous. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, so those pass. And then C is Texas Government Code five five one point zero eight seven for deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And so we're gonna take those out of order, we're gonna start with C, and, and we're gonna do these all upstairs in my conference room, because one of those contracts is gonna be a fairly big group of people, probably bigger than we can handle down here, so we'll just go ahead and, and go up and do them up there. For C, we'll start out with, and we need our attorneys, Chief of Staff, Audit, and Kimberly Roach. I think that's all we need for C for, and then we'll go back up to, the A will be, we'll need, Kimberly would, would then leave, but we would still have the rest in, and then add in Budget Charles, and I believe that's all in there. And then we'll, I can't remember who leaves in that next one, but then Lieutenant House and Chief Martinez will be in the, and.
Jarvis. I think Jarvis is already in there, but Jarvis is a little.
Oh, Jarvis, okay, all right. We'll do that one, we'll catch that one last. And, golly, it's twelve oh three. Do we wanna recess and come back at one-thirty? And is that gonna cause a problem?
Be honest, it'll cause a problem?
It works out.
It works out. Yes, it's okay to recess, or yes, it'll cause a problem?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Sure.
I put you on the carpet, I know.
Okay, so we're, we're not gonna go into, to the executive session at this moment. We'll come back at one-thirty, reconvene back in here, and then we'll go back up in and follow the process and do the, because it may take a while to go through all of those.